Council will call this meeting to order for the record is November 5th to 2025 at 4:30 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilman Taylor.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilman Whitlock.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I don't see any changes to today's agenda, so I'm going to move the, adopt the agenda as published.
Second. Have a motion second to adopt the agendas published. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. You guys have it and the agenda is agreed to. Up next is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign the clerk to test.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor signal by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. You guys have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will go on to our department reports. First item up is item AP, which is fiscal year 2026 proposed fee increase update. Turn this over to Jenny.
Mr. Mayor, huh? Mr. Mayor, um, sort of point out councilman's, council administrators now here.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, I'm going to share a file on this screen. So tonight, we are going to be discussing, continuating our discussion of our fee updates. The numbers in front of you are the fees that we have taken out of our, um, proposed public hearing at the six o'clock meeting. These are the nine fees that were exceeding the 130% change in our proposed fees versus our current. Um, so today's discussion is, we are gonna, we have subject matter experts here to answer any of the questions that you have. But it's, we're trying to figure out what the desire is of council to, um, on each of these fees where we want to go as far as, the fully loaded or full cost recovery or a different value of recovering these costs. So for, with that, we're gonna start, should we start one by one and then ask council, see if we have, uh, a consensus or where you want to go with each of these fees? Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first one on the list is city clerks, uh, mobile sales unit licenses. Does count, so right now, it is a proposal of a hundred and forty-eight dollar increase. Included in this fee is the thirty-three dollars of, um, our background check fee that, or that we remit to ISP.
I assume Mr. Clerk is our subject matter expert on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I can try to be. So this is one of the only licenses we're unable to move online at this point, just because of the required background check. As Jenny said, thirty-three twenty-five of that goes to Idaho State Police. It's a pass-through cost. So our cost initially was forty dollars to do that. We do have a considerable amount of time involved with that in my office, um, taking that application, entering the information. And then police, um, has to review background checks as well. So that's where we got to the hours for that. And that's just the full cost recovery finance proposed. I can tell you, along with this, we did, uh, recently bring in-house fingerprinting, so we're able to do that now. That was an additional ten dollars the applicant paid directly to Idaho State Police. So we've reduced the cost by ten dollars out of pocket for them to be able to know their entity. And that will actually also reduce our cost. So this may, may fluctuate a bit. I think it brings down our cost to twenty-eight, twenty-five, but I'm not exactly sure on that.
Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Chris, could you just, when we're saying mobile sales unit license, are we talking food trucks? We talking about a, a mobile vendor? I mean, give me a little finer point exactly what this license is.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Taylor, that is, uh, door-to-door sales as well as, um, food trucks. So food trucks, food carts, anyone that is, um, selling in a public area has this license. Well, door-to-door and public area.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Whitlock.
Chris, that, this is an annual, um, license then, good for a year?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Whitlock, it is an annual license, so it's not renewable, but it's a, a one-year license from the date of issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Chris, is the time associated in the same for, for your department to execute this? Have there been added regulatory requirements from either the state or another branch of government that requires additional time?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, there has not been. This is the same process since, um, since I started in 2018.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Chris, is there any, uh, does this look like it's going to move online anytime in the future? It sounds like it hasn't changed. Maybe it won't. It's just, it's like a very manually intensive process for the city.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Taylor, we would love to move it online, but because of the fingerprinting requirement, we do require, um, applicant to come in and, and pay in person and pick that up. Uh, we explored doing that. We explored doing a, um, online background check, um, but it did not meet the requirements police wanted to have in reviewing those applications.
Mr. Mayor, a quick follow-up.
Councilman Taylor.
Are we talking a dozen, fifty, two hundred? How, do you have any sense of how many, um?
Looking right now to see how many licenses we issued.
Uh, I show a hundred and fifty-two unit was sold in fiscal year twenty-four.
Thank you, Jenny.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Speak to this particular one. I just, I also want to commend the clerk's department. They've moved online, so we can see who has licenses as opposed to hasn't and not that my neighborhood is any barometer, but we're at a, at a hundred percent of door solicitors that have come to my neighborhood have not had their mobile sales license. And it's, it also serves as a great deterrent when someone is soliciting you to ask you if they have a sales license. They don't, and they quickly move out of the neighborhood. So I want to commend the clerk's department for having that available.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Just a, a little history as we worked through this years ago, implementing this. I was tasked on the police department with doing the background checks on the mobile stable unit licenses. We had a little group within the city, included legal and the city clerk's office determining what that cost would be. And one of the overwhelming factors is we as a city are deciding who we're going to allow to go to your door. And how important that was. And those background checks sometimes can take a lot longer than you would normally think. Because we're dealing with some interesting individuals at times. Most people, it's not a problem. We go through. This is the one that always rolls back, but I think is there, so important to look at from the vantage point that we as a city are approving these people that come door-to-door to be driving your ice cream trucks, to be doing all these other jobs. And, uh, there's a lot of time and effort to go into every one of these.
I don't know if it matters in this case. I, I know more and more people put up no soliciting signs on their doors. I think people are generally not supportive of having a lot of salespeople. Not all. Some, some don't, don't mind it through that. If this is one where the full cost of the fee makes sense, and if it, if it deters people who maybe don't have a product that's worthy of that fee to go door-to-door, I don't know. It, it's just like, in, in some regards, I'm, I'm torn because I know a lot of our community doesn't really like the door-to-door salespeople to begin with, but if we're gonna do it, we have to, we should do it correctly. Um, so.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I think that's the, I, I tend to agree with you. Um, that challenge, right, is this fee I only assume was going to continue to increase, and I think with every dollar it increases, it, you know, de-incentivizes people from doing the right thing. I, I look at, you know, when the city moved from unlimited trash cleanup to limited, we saw a lot of rogue dumping throughout our city because people didn't want to pay the extra fee. You've got to keep it affordable enough from a public safety standpoint that people, you know, do get that license. But I think at least for, for now, I'm, I'm supportive of this increase, um, understanding, you know, it, it is just reflection on the labor cost and the fee from ISP that it takes for us to, to be able to, to operate that service. And I appreciate the good explanation.
Okay.
Anything else on this one at this time? Jenny, next one?
Okay. So the next four is, um, related. So it's our, uh, TUP temporary use permit, and they're in the various categories that we're proposing the change. These again are, um, are costs of doing each of these with the various departments that manages this. And again, we have our subject matter experts here.
So, Sergeant, I don't know if you're done.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I do have a question that just would maybe help me understand what the administrative co- cost or time difference is about doing these events in a park versus not in a park?
I'm sure our subject matter experts can come up and explain that. I, I believe I know what the answer is, but I'm willing to hear what they say.
When it's not in a park, I don't, our parks department definitely doesn't touch it. Um, our, our staff doesn't have to deal with any of the the stuff, to my understanding on that.
That's what my guess and belief was.
Yeah, in a park, it's more labor intensive. We have more people involved than, we kind of know where it's, what we meet with them on site several times to kind of make sure it's all set and done there. Also, if there's several different vendors and things, we have to have our park staff also visits with them and talks to them about where to, if they drive in sprinkler boxes, flagging sprinkler boxes, those types of things. So that may be some of the difference. But when they're outside of a park, we really don't touch them, so. Hope that answers that.
Yeah. And then, and I, I'm not quite sure who to ask this. You know, we, we recognize a special event in a park. We're, we're not wanting to meet at the full cost recovery. Recognizing that the proposed fee is only three dollars more than a temporary use permit for an outdoor market in a park. I'm just also trying to understand what is, what is the difference between, and what is the time element that requires more administrative time to do an outdoor market in a park versus a special event in a park?
Probably just really depends on the logistics of each event, really, and the time around it and the average of each of them.
Mr. Mayor.
Would it be the person, person's wage who reviews the different, the two different items?
Yeah, I would, yes. When that, when we work with finance, they do factor in how much time, I particularly use, you know, review an application to where Skylar reviews an application or our park staff is onsite and things like that, on average of how much time it is per event.
So it, it could be any, any person in any department who's a different level, who has a different hourly wage that creates that difference.
Mr. Mayor, and I, I apologize. Is, is that the reason? We think that's the reason. I, I guess I'm, I'm a little challenged. We've, we've had this for a few weeks and I'm not looking for.
Uh, Todd's, go ahead, Todd.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Cavanagh, uh, great question. The two forty-five, you'll see that it's been adjusted down. You'll see the, uh, cost recovery has been reduced. The true cost recover that you would have seen two or three weeks ago is two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Between that meeting and this meeting, it was requested to reduce it down to that number. So if you wanted true cost to true cost, it was two ninety-nine versus two forty-five. And we can get you exactly which hours by each department, by each individual. But the true full-fol is actually about fifty dollars between the two.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I'm still looking for a why. Why, why, why is it different? What is the cost different? What is the time? Is it a market in a park takes five hours from Garrett and a special event takes ten hours with five hours from the clerk and five hours from Garrett?
So our, when we are doing our calculation, it signifies that we spent sixty minutes from our recreation coordinator to do a special events in the park versus the outdoor market did not require that sixty-minute time allocation.
Perfect. That's the exact answer that I'm looking for. Thank you, Jenny. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Could I just get a little bit of, really basic, uh, what's this process for when you're, when you receive one of these requests for the, the parks department? It comes in, can you just give me the step-by-step as it's kind of going through the review process and, and whatnot? Yeah, Councilman Taylor, um, Mr. Mayor. So basically, if, say, if, um, you called our office, want to know about a special event, you typically talk to one of our receptionists first, and then they will send you over to myself and/or Skylar. Primarily Skylar deals with these types of things. And then Skylar, um, has the ability to determine whether it needs to be a large-scale event, small-scale event, TUP reservation, those types of things to try to make these things work. Um, a lot of times when it becomes a TUP, Skylar will then get it all booked through REC One or scheduling software. Talk to them over the phone, send them email follow-ups with all the conditions that are with the TUP process and how to set up the TUP and how to turn in the TUP and kind of walk them through and hold their hand through the whole process with that. Once all that TUP is said and done, then Skylar will meet with them onsite. Even if it's a returning event, every year we meet with them onsite. That way, we can kind of go over what went wrong last year, what we liked last year, what worked well, what didn't work well, those types of things with each event organizer. And we walk the whole park and we talk to them about what they're going to do to increase, decrease, um, some of the parking needs or whatever it may be, or if they're planning on promoting it more and growing the event. Um, and we kind of work through those conditions with them onsite with some of our park staff sometimes. Does, does that answer that?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Little Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, Garrett, um, with an ongoing event like a market, is that fee charged like every weekend because the staff puts forth more effort having that event there, even though you don't have to go through all of the process each time?
Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Little Roberts, Mr. Mayor. Um, so typically, and Chris may be able to help answer this question bef- before me, but typically if it's an ongoing event like a market type of thing, um, we do check in on them periodically, but we don't have to do the fee every time. The, it's kind of grouped in it. I want to say it's like thirty days or, Chris may be answering the question.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, yes. I, it's thirty or sixty days, depending on the license type, but it's, it's one license that covers the duration of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
This is for either for, uh, Chris or Garrett. Are there any other governmental requirements that we're adhering to as a result of these fees, anything county, health district, state, or anything that requires any reporting from us?
There's nothing from my office, um, that we've gotten mandated to do. There, there could be something with police or fire I'm not aware of.
Yeah. I, I do know that police and fire do reserve, review some of these TUPs and special events and things like that. We do work with, um, um, Harper to determine what we need for parking plans, safety plans. I know that the fire department does look at these as well. Um, I don't know how much time they put into it in particular, but, um, when it comes to the park stuff, we kind of completely stick to the park side.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Finance team, are we accounting for that time then in this fee as well?
Yes, we are. Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Mr. Mayor, to follow up on a, we don't have any notes of any state, federal, or other governmental agencies imposing a fee on this to answer that question on our side. So uh, what you see is just true costs. And we do have, I think, five different departments that are participating in your calculation of this fee. Is that, and we can tell you exactly what departments, how many minutes were given by every department that we interviewed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Today or later from, I, I would like to understand kind of the basis for how we determined what application requires X amount of time, like what that process was. And to me, making sure that if, are these taking the same amount of time today that they took five years ago? Are they taking more time? I, I hope they would take maybe less time that we become more efficient with ourselves, but I, I don't know the answer to that.
Mr. Mr., oh, I apologize. Mr. Mayor, I know that when we conduct our interviews, those are the questions that we ask the subject matter experts go. One, do we need to do this? How much time are you spending? We ask them to use the eighty percent rule because we know that, you know, Garrett and Garrett Market event, they've got down in two minutes. The Todd and Todd Market event, oh, that takes eighty-seven minutes. We just ask on eighty percent of the time, what feels right to you? And that's kind of the general question, kind of like where you're going. It's like, is, are we doing what we're doing because we got to do it? But again, if there's any specific questions, we can definitely work with your subject matter experts. Go, can you give us a detail of details and try to get you that answer?
I, I think this goes back to my comments before. These are all self-imposed.
Yes.
We, we, we've determined that these are things that we want to have done or that our departments think are important to have done to have a successful event, and these are the costs that they feel are appropriate. We could charge zero for these and just ask people to do them if cost recovery is not important.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, it was a council, Councilman Cavanagh, help add to your, the question. So there's a, a group, a committee that's made up of the different departments. And then if it is a special event, um, that requires our temporary use permit, we do have meetings of that group. It also does include other agencies. We don't charge the fees for them, but they do. So if it impacts the roadway, HHD is involved. There is a fee for those that they charge for, for special events of that they will, uh, tell them that. We do have, um, both Ada County Highway District there as well as Ada County EMS to, to go over any safety plans or concerns that might be had. There's also a, an internal discussion on whether or not planning's involved, whether any planning permits are needed or any other building permits are needed. Depending what type of event they are, if they have certain types of tents or buildings or structures or stages and things that require building permits or electrical permits and other ones, and that's part of that conversation. And those folks are part of that meeting as well. Legal's there too, because oftentimes we create contracts between them and the city for reimbursement. So there is a number of people that are involved in that discussion. And even as, as Todd said, even on recurring events, we're also all looking at, again, what has, things have changed. Circumstances have changed. Even the event feels the same. It isn't always the same because of change, traffic change in the area, change in the traffic patterns, the, in, in the area with more apartments, more houses, and they plan to grow the event. So there is a lot of staff time, and that's kind of what those, that fees come from.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank, thank you. That is very, very enlightening and very helpful. And what I'm hearing from that is unlike the background check for mobile sales license where we're collecting a fee on behalf of another agency with these, we are not collecting fees. If the other fees exist, those agencies will pass those fees along through their own mechanism.
Yes.
To the city. Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Whitlock.
Jenny, could you just scroll to the right? Um, the document in our packet didn't have the number of sales or units sold for each of those. We're talking about one, eight, thirty, and fifty-seven. Okay, that's helpful.
Council, additional questions on these items? Okay, move on to the next two.
Our next two is with our police department, and they are part of our, um, impound fees. And in your packet today is the two that is exceeding the hundred and thirty for dogs and livestock. There's also two that I want to bring to your attention that is below the hundred and thirty. So if we are going to make any changes, we should also consider, um, the other animals that is in this group. Reason why is because, uh, this is part of our Idaho Humane Society agreement that we have to modify as a package.
I have a question.
Councilman Schrader.
Thanks. Um, so why would the proposed fee for the cats then, Jenny, go to zero? Help me understand that.
Um, when we did our cost evaluation, it was that we didn't have any, um, labor costs associated with cat impound.
Is that just because we weren't rounding up any cats that year or like, help me understand that? Sorry, I don't know how to put that, but.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember, um, Schrader, it's a fair question. Uh, these are the, these are the inputs that we get back from our interviews when we work with your department's subject matter experts. We ask them the, today, what are you doing today with X fee? And at that moment in time when we had the interview, they were conducting, they said they were not spending any time for this. You know, we're happy to dive into that more if you want the exact, um, something in more detail, but that is the answer we got from our subject matter experts between dog and cat.
Um, okay. I, I just, to me, it doesn't make any sense. Just rationally, it doesn't make any sense to be charging a hundred and forty-five bucks for a dog and zero for a cat. I feel like there, there needs to be some kind of rationale among the various creatures that we're, you know, dealing with to, like, it, it should sort of go together, right? I get it. A dog is more work than a cat. Maybe it happens more often. So maybe with the dogs, you think it's a hundred and forty-five, sort of seems like you need some kind of a fee for a cat, because maybe we're not spending time, but if we did have to, right, if we're rounding up a bunch of cats all of a sudden, then, then we are spending time and we should charge something. So I don't know. That, that's all I'd say. I, I just want to see some sort of like consistency of like, we should be charging something. I assume that livestock, yeah, that makes sense. I bet it's very challenging if we're dealing with livestock to, to, to do so. Um, anyway, I, I would recommend charging something for the cats. And, uh, some of, I'm sure, I think this is ground you guys have already treaded, but one comment I have is just, and I think I've made this comment to finance directly as well, just like going forward, let's review these fees more frequently, so we don't have these kinds of dramatic increases, because I think that's what um, sets people off. Like if we wait too long and then we're stuck, like tripling fees, I think that's frustrating for the public. So I'm sure you've heard that, but just reiterating that. Um, I, I think we should charge something for the cats. Um, the livestock one, I don't, I don't really know how to wrap my head around that and what's involved there. Um, anyway.
I, I want to ask Captain.
Did you?
Does Idaho Humane Society actually pick up kids? That's, that's, that's what my general rationale is. I don't think that anybody picks up cats on anybody's behalf.
So I, knowing this might come up, uh, Mayor and Council, I reached out to them yesterday for some stats. And in twenty twenty-four, uh, they, they collected redemption fees on two hundred and thirty animals. Hundred and eighty-five of those were dogs, twenty-five were cats. So, well, through October of this year, there are two hundred and four animals being a hundred and seventy-four dogs and forty cats. Uh, no livestock recovered in the last two years. And there's already a note here on the, the presentation, uh, and legal had reached out to them. There, I think in, the Humane Society is in favor of some increase on, on dogs. But is worried that making it too high, people just won't come get their dogs. I don't, I don't know how much that helps you, but, um, they do collect some cats and collect some fees.
Mr. Mayor, I think part of the, the disconnect is, is because I don't believe they will go out and get cats.
Like impound.
I think people will turn them in, and that's where they have them, is probably turning them in. And I think from our conver- our department's conversation with them is, again, the concern is, is that, again, they want people to come get them. Uh, rather than, and so I think they're willing, that's why they were willing to say no cost for taking the cats, recovering the cats. They'd rather people came and got them. But dogs, most people will come and get them unless the dogs are sick or the logs are, are too difficult. But they were also concerned, again, of the fees to why people won't come back for them either. But they do at least go out to impound dogs, and they do go out and do that. We have a leash law for dogs and not for cats. So we do actually go out and round those up, but that's, I think, where the difference is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Is any portion of this fee then paid to the Humane Society separate from our contract, or is this fees that go to the city?
A great question. This is all, as Robert said, us self-created fee. We get to determine how much we want to charge.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Based on the amount of time we think it will take to recover each of these specific animals?
Yes.
You're correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
It's from a, from an operation standpoint, do you foresee directing our police department to go round up cats?
Directing?
Yeah, I mean, if, if this is, if this is a fee based on the amount of time that our employees are going to spend on these items, and we're not, we're not the cat police. I mean, I see, I see it being. I mean, I see, I see it being zero, but I just would say then we should just eliminate this as a.
I, I'll look at the word impound. You know, to me, impound means you're taking possession of because somebody else, it has, that cat has done something that it needs to be relieved of its location as compared to it's loose in the neighborhood or hurt. And, and, and the, the Humane Society, they will respond to animals that are hurt or whatnot, but impound is, is the big word. I mean, if, if there was a, I'm thinking a case at someone's house, the cat somehow needs to be impounded for police reasons. Are we going to charge them that fee through that process? But I don't know any other way that we would, why we'd impound a cat.
I guess, that's why, I realize it's kind of a farcical question, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
If these are based on time for our employees to respond, and they're not the ones that were responding. I have a disconnect. Like, if we're not responding, but we're using the response time to base our fee, how can we base a fee on a response time if we're not responding?
I, I will turn to those that put this together. I, I can understand they're anticipating what the cost might be if they have to go out and do the work, either because they have experience or otherwise. I think a livestock is a very subjective one. You know, to get, you know, you gotta go rent a trailer, which we don't have, in order to do that. I'm just guessing that's part of that money, but I don't know, through that process. So, thank you. Save me.
Is, is it there? I'm not saying we never recover an animal depending on the situation, but we're always calling the Humane Society to come take the animal for us. I think that these fees are collected on their end, and then my understanding and finance could clarify this, those fees that are collected are sent back to the city to somewhat offset our contract. So the, the Humane Society is doing all of this work, probably with rare exception, and that money is coming back to the city. As far as cats go, I think Bill's right on that. These are cats that probably are primarily turned in, and they're collecting a fee and somebody's actually coming and redeeming the cat.
All I'm, and I apologize, I'm being challenged, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Apologize for being challenging on these. Just trying to follow what I understood is our, our decision about these is to base them on what we think the actual costs will be. We're not actually going to accrue cost doing this. And so I'm okay if we're, we just need to say, hey, we're just being subjective on this one.
I think.
Not based on actuals, it's based on cats.
I think that, that the cat is, that's why that's zero recommendation is, I don't think we're going out and doing this as a general. And I'll, I'll give you fifteen bucks if you can catch my cat. As it's.
And Mr. Mayor, again, I know we're being farcical, but again, what I would want is, I would want to, I, I wouldn't want the Humane Society to be overrun with cats or with dogs because the fee is so high that people are not coming and collecting them. So I mean, that's a separate conversation, but the thought is if these fees are based on what our cost is as a city to provide this service, and we're not providing the service. Why, why are we charging it? I mean, we're going to have a fee for, for water slides. We don't have any water slides in the city. So why, why are we charging eight bucks to ride a water slide when we don't actually have any water slides? If we're not doing these services, why are we creating fees for a service that we're not providing?
If they would give us a discount off the contract for them collecting the fees, and that's essentially what we're doing. We're.
Okay.
We're essentially giving their cost to do this work for us or our cost if they are not available.
As it pertains to these particular fees, these are largely then subjective. We're just kind of making it an educated guess as to what we think the market can bear versus what other cities are charging for the Humane Society to collect on our behalf. Perfect. That gives me greater clarity. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Schrader.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So did the Humane Society have feedback or recommendation on the dog fee specifically? Like what they think is the sweet spot where we're not, you know, going to have an issue of just people abandoning their pets?
Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I did not hear back a recommendation, but we did obtain some market comparables between us and the surrounding cities and areas from IHS. So in front of you is what we, our current fee is at this moment in time, and then the surrounding cities. It is not apples to apples because they, it depends on the neutered versus non-neutered, and there are different types of dogs that different entities have various fees on. So for us, we have a simple, more simplified approach in our IHS agreement, whereas the other ones in front of you, you'll see the range, it ranges drastically by the animal. I don't know if that helps, but I, we did not receive a recommendation of an amount.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I know our department reached out to Humane Society as well, and they were fine with those two of those fees. They thought those were reasonable for what the market is for those two. The two they didn't were the ones that were there on the bottom, the cat and the other, the other, it was a vicious dog, I can't remember what it was. The other two that you had on here, yeah, the impound fee for the vicious dog, we just felt were a little too high. But I think those are the ones they had comment on. The other two for impound fee for the dog and livestock, they didn't have a concern with it, what I understood.
Again, we can just leave the fees as they are, if that's what council would prefer. Yeah. As I, I can almost guarantee you it's not going to cost five hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-one cents to get a livestock. It might be three thousand. It, it might be a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Of time. If, if, if the chief is nearby with his dog, I mean, honestly, that thing can be rounded up and put back into a field by that dog probably pretty easily with very little cost.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think the livestock could be anything from a horse to a peacock. So I don't think there's really a lot of distinction. So I think you're right. I don't think it's that. I think it's the others that, and again, the dog one is the one that they have the most on, so.
And I would hate to spend a lot of time on something that is highly likely never probable or a one-time in five years expense. Can we move on to the planning ones?
So in our planning group, the two that exceeds a hundred and thirty is our plan unit development and then our surety reduction fee. In addition to that, I have noted on your screen that there are two others that we kind of talked about in a previous meeting, that we had a change from a per lot basis to now a flat per application fee. And that is why these two percentage changes are very high. They are not apples to apples. These are per plat, per lot, and this is a flat application fee. So if we want to talk about planning fees, we have our subject matter expert here to discuss any operational questions you may have.
I assume that's Mr. Hood. Caleb, do you have anything you would like to add to these fees specifically for perspective on, uh, plan unit developments, maybe specifically?
Mr. Mayor, Council, yeah, I'd be happy to if you'd like me to. Regarding the PUDs, and this goes for all of ours, and I think you've said it with a few discussed already, just operating on the hundred percent cost recovery. So again, your discretion if you don't want to charge us, but it is what it takes on average for our, our team to, to process these. For the PUD use exceptions, it is eight hours. Those are all planning department hours. No clerks, no legal, no fire. It is just a hundred percent planning, associate planner rate hours. There are two hearings for each one of those, so Planning and zoning commission and city council. There's also standalone findings for that exception. So there's a little bit more writing that goes into that. You're going to make the findings if you're going to grant those exceptions. So it does take a little bit more, it's an add-on basically to the PUD CUP application. So it's an additional fee, unlike what Jenny just described. This one is a, a tag along, additional fee per exception. And it can be tedious. So you want to research to see which ones we've approved in the past. If something like lot size is going to be variable throughout a project, you've got to verify each one of the lots, for example. So it can be time intensive. On average, though, eight hours per. Typically, there's also multiple pre-apps with the applicant, walking them through that. Hey, you've got to lead us to the water so we can make the findings to support your application. Usually, PUDs are larger projects too. So again, a little more time intensive even on the front end, lay it out for them what, what's expected to get, get through the process. So I, I can't, we're herding a bunch of cats there with that. So no, I couldn't help myself, sorry. And then we also, it will just consult amongst ourselves with these two, right? Kind of poll the team. What do you think about this request? Does this seem reasonable with what's being requested for the exception? So that's, that's kind of our methodology for the PUDs. I can run through, there's some mapping also typically involved, about a half hour is what we've got allocated. So these are all averages. Maybe I'll just, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll step back just a little bit. Our, our process in planning is we are on a three-year rotation for fees. So it, once every three years, we basically take our fees in the thirds. So we're not doing it all the time because we have a lot of fees. So if we're tracking each application every time, it's, it's pretty intensive. So every three years, we look at our fees to see how long it's taking us to do it, and then we work with finance to adjust the fees that we've looked at if they need adjusting. So that's kind of our cycle and our process. We also obviously coordinate with the clerk, fire, police. Most of the departments are actually involved in our processes. So I send them a spreadsheet. Hey, for three months, can you track these applications, a third of all of our application types? Give us your average that it takes, and then finance does all the backend math with, you know, fully loaded costs or whatever their rate is that they assign to the legal team or assistant versus associate versus planning director, and that's how you get to the fee. So anyways, that's PUD and just the higher level, our process for looking at fees currently anyways.
And the increase in surety reduction?
Yep. So that one, I'll just, I got to walk you through the process a little bit to understand. It is three hours is what that is. Two of them are on planning. So let me just even explain what a surety reduction is. So there's some things that developers post a surety for or a guarantee that things will be improved. Fencing, landscaping are pretty common ones that will be, a surety will be posted for. Sometimes weather will get bad, you can't plant landscaping, or they ran out of something, or you just can't get on the calendar for a contract or whatever. So we'll have them post a surety. But what they have to do then is we have to go out there and inspect what they've done. So they've done some of the work, but not a hundred percent of the work. So we have to review the plans. They tell us what they've done. If there's a hundred trees, they got fifty of them in, we can reduce that. But we have to go out there, we have to verify that, we have to get a new letter of credit or cash or whatever that is. Kelly Ready and our, on our surety team then has to write up a whole new agreement for that to reduce the amount, let's just say fifty percent or whatever that cost is. So on average, it's about three hours, include site, site visits, reviewing the plans and all the paperwork to actually update that agreement that says that they'll finish the work. So that's, that's what that. We were short-changed before. That one has been basically an hour. That's what it takes to do the paperwork, but the inspection and all those other things were never really accounted for. So that's, that's why the fee is higher than just your three or four or five percent kind of inflation rate.
Council questions?
Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Compliment, Caleb. Thank you. I appreciate a very thorough explanation, taking this seriously and giving counsel the better understanding as to the why behind this. So I just want to come in.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Caleb Boyer at the podium, do you mind just touching base or touching on the, the two others listed on here? I know just describing against sort of the changing sort of concept about how you're going to do that.
Yeah, so line fourteen and fifteen, I'm going to take together because it's the same concept for both of them. Jenny kind of mentioned it, but our, our past practice, our current practice until or if this gets adopted, is we have a separate, and we thought it was easier for accounting purposes to have fire, you know, we charge a fee and that goes right into their account instead of us collecting a big fee and then taking it out for whatever their, our contract fire inspectors. We did the same thing though, and basically the, the cost is still about the same. It's actually a little less, taking a forty lot subdivision average, that's about the size of an average final plat is around forty lots. So it's actually a little bit less with this fee, although it shows a two thousand percent increase or whatever it is, yeah, almost three thousand percent increase. But that's, that's what we've done is really, it's, it's just the accounting of it. If you roll those two fees into the actual plat, it's actually going to be on average less. It's a simplification, easier for developers, easier for us. I think finance has been like, where does this go in fire? And it's like, well, just collect it and put in the general fund. So.
Oh, if it's a ten lot subdivision, it's going to be more. If it's two hundred lot subdivision, it's going to be less. If it's an average subdivision, it's going to be.
And that's where we come up with, again, on average, it's forty, yes, it's, it is going to be a little bit more if you're a smaller subdivision, but on average, and that's what this is, is an average, that, that's the average cost.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I guess I'm just wondering, anytime we go from a per unit fee to a blanket fee, like what is the net fiscal impact expected from this change? Would be my question for your department generally. So, yeah, because that's what I, that's what I was concerned about. Like I, I actually think it might make sense to continue with more of a per unit approach, unless we put the same exact amount of work into every single application, right? Like that's what I need to understand because we're, we have a department that I think is in kind of a challenging environment right now, and I just want to make sure we are trying to recover as much of our costs as possible in community development, just generally.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, yeah, I'll be honest with you on this one. You know, relatively new fire marshal, and I couldn't explain the methodology to him or to finance on this because this, again, is something for, since two thousand and seven, we've been shipping off to fire to say, you tell us how much time it takes, and they came up with a, a per lot average. That's why we thought it would be best to just go to a flat fee because it really doesn't, as I understand it, take them any more time to look at a ten lot subdivision versus a forty lot subdivision. So that's why they came up with this average cost for both fire and then Public Works as well. There really wasn't much difference to look at a larger subdivision or a, there's nothing on an individual per lot basis that Public Works is looking at anymore. So just a flat fee made sense for them. That's about as well as I can explain it because it's not my, my fee, but that's some of the conversations that I've been privy to anyways.
So I'm just, it looks like if we pass all of these changes, that there would be no expected change. Like if I net out the PUD exception fee, the surety fee, and then these two final and preliminary plat fees, like, we're kind of just reshuffling. We're not really, I guess this is a question for Jenny, there's really not a, a big fiscal impact either way, right?
Mayor and Councilwoman Schrader, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm okay, if you all feel like this is more accurate, I'm, I'm okay with it. If it better reflects what you're actually doing and you think this is simplifying things, I'm okay with it. On my end, but, yeah.
Council, additional questions for Mr. Hood on these items? Thank you. So Council, I guess the question is, we, we could take this information and you could think about it and email in your thoughts on each one of these, or whether or not you leave it, take it up, we could do a heads up. You know, leave it where it is, leave it where it's proposed, something different, or you can just talk generally if you want to say, let's do a five-year ramp up to any of these changes, three years. I think some of them would be hard to do, you know, to do that, but if you're concerned about the use permit increases, you know, we could do those over time. Just however you want to, think you want to approach these, either individually separately or take a week or two to think about what you may or may not want to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Some thoughts, I might still want to mull it over for a little bit. I really appreciate though the staff for giving us some understanding of the process and very helpful context. The only, the only fees here that I think I have a hard time saying, yes, let's move ahead as it is, are just the temporary use permits. Those are, those are, I still see those as, you know, I envision people in our community who are asking them to do events and different things. I know sometimes it's, you know, at the chamber, groups, church groups, maybe different. I know sometimes it's, you know, at the chamber groups, church groups, maybe different things. So I'm probably more comfortable personally getting there over a little bit of a period of time as opposed to one year. It's just my, those are the only ones that really bother me here, just to see that increase. But I'm open to thinking about it and some, some consideration, understanding. We've been subsidizing this for years and years and years. And then in year one, having, you know, getting the full cost recovery. What's another year or two to get to full cost recovery? That doesn't bother me as much because I see those as more things we're imposing on, on groups that we want to encourage them to use our parks and to, to do it the right way. Like we want to encourage that instead of giving them a perverse incentive to not do that because of the cost. And I do think going from $50 to $200, 85 to 245, you will have some people say, okay, never mind, I'm not going to do that. So I don't want to see that. I, I think that adds to the vibrancy of the city and enjoyment. So that's what I think about those. The rest of the fees, I can probably say, I understand the justification, makes sense. I, I can probably say, okay, the temporary use permit, I'm probably not there.
Maybe to piggyback on the temporary use permits, because it, I, these are our quality of life permits. You know, these are the things that people come and get, like I said, get to enjoy and get to experience. And frankly, a lot of ways, we want to encourage through that. I, I have no issue with personally leaving them where they're at, or they're all relatively close. Or if you want to save $100, is the cost for you want to do an event, that's your general cost. And we leave it at that. But I'm not, when we are self-imposing the costs based upon what we think is important, I, I get it, it does take time. But then a day, would we rather have an event in Meridian or not have an event in Meridian? And so I'm, I'm fine to not adjust them or maybe set one, one fee for all events, regardless of them and as, as a consideration. Counselman Schrader.
Thanks, Mayor. I tend to agree. I, I think that the event fees can really add up just based on my experience with like the Meridian Hanukkah celebration, for example. Like you have a TUP and then you have amplified sound and you have a bunch of other stuff going on. Like it can really add up. So I'd, I'd be supportive of just like a flat fee for all of them. That's higher, like $100 or something, or maybe like a two-year ramp or something like that. That would be okay. The dog fee feels high, like I think it's a little off compared to the neighboring cities. I think that would make more sense at like 125. I think you've got to charge something for cats in the event. You have to round up a cat, maybe that should be 50 bucks. It just seems weird not, like hypothetically, we don't do it hypothetically. If we had to, we should charge something. I don't know, that, that, that's my thought. I mean, if it's a bike case, that, that seems more involved and more dangerous. And I don't know, so maybe that's higher. I, I don't have any issue either with the planning fees as long as the net fiscal impact is pretty much neutral, which is what I'm seeing. So I guess that's my feedback on all of it on my end.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Cavan.
All the good conversation, lots of good ideas here. I think when it comes to temporary use permits, we've just got to make a decision about if we want 100% of cost recovery or we don't. I'm of the mindset that we should be working towards 100% cost recovery on all fees that impact our city employees. But I agree with Councilmember Taylor and Schrader that a flipping of the switch on some of these doesn't make sense. If I, if I remember correctly, finance staff, you guys are going to review these every five years?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cavan, what was that?
We're going to reevaluate all fees every five years, every three years?
The finance department is imposing, we're trying to deploy an annualized update to all fees that we can account for. Like you heard from Mr. Hood, he wants to go on three, three-year, or every three, third. Again, we will respect the director's discussion, decision, but we want to present to you an annualized approach that we touch, talk and do something with fees on, for you every year.
And I think I would add, you will see all these change every year at a minimum because the costs of our employees and our, our base rate change will impact these every single year. It's just a matter of do we, how much further do we go into it? But we will ask them to, they can eye test it every year and they know something has changed. They'll, they'll make that adjustment. If they want to track it the way planning does every three years, they will do that.
That is helpful, Mr. Mayor. So I, you know, I would suggest, I think kind of someone's already been shared as a, of a three-year ramp up on the TUPs. Recognizing, I don't know what that dollar amount is because it's going to shift from year to year, but the hope would be is that three years from now, we would have 100% cost recovery for our TUPs. When it comes to the stuff related to the Humane Society, I mean, I'm, I'm going to look to our police department, our partner in the Humane Society to, to share what that fee needs to be. And I think it's important, it shouldn't cost more to dispose of a dog in Meridian than it does in Boise. It shouldn't also cost less. And recognize everybody's city does it differently, but as much as we can work to trying to provide that consistency, I think that's a good opportunity for the city of Meridian to lead on. Those would be my suggestions. I think Councilmember Taylor has a, a good point, though, to maybe let this sit for another week or two and contemplate and have follow-up conversations if need be with department directors or finance.
That work? Team head nods, okay? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, we'll move on to item 19, which is our park and shelter fee schedule.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me tonight. Here to talk about shelter fees and park fees and the discussion around that. Really, the objective tonight is me to just kind of show you guys the proposal, get feedback from you guys. If you guys are uncomfortable with it, the proposal, then I'll post the fees and we'll come back a couple of weeks later for the public hearing for approval if possible. So that being said, over the past few months, been working with the finance department to kind of go over all these fees like we have just heard and discussed. And the last time these park fees and shelter fees were updated was 2018. So it's time for us to come back and kind of review them and go from there. So our proposal is basically a 30% increase. And where we got that 30% is the, based on the CPI, the inflationary rate between 2018 and 2025 is 30 or 29% and some change. So we just said this around 30% and that was where we came up with a proposal. And doing that, the majority of our shelters and stuff like that came in right at our cost recovery philosophy level. And then there's a couple that were actually on the higher end. And those were our two, are the big shelters at Kleiner that are super, super nice barbecue grills, all the above with them, right? As well as the Discovery Park Green Shelter. So they're on the higher end, but they still do fall within our cost recovery philosophy that we're going through right now. Some of the actual park fees themselves, we kind of looked at them separately and rounded to the, the nearest whole dollar. But they were based on the cost recovery philosophy for each one of them. So I hope that all makes sense. The shelters were 30% increase and the other ones were kind of hit and miss. On the bottom of my memo here, I did write some notes and hopefully those were helpful. Some of the ones that were just huge jumps, and I'll use the example of the baseball field prep fee. Right now, it was, it's $12.50 if we have the ability to prep a field. Well, full cost recovery is $45 per prep. So that's a huge jump. That's a 260% increase. So we're proposing to jump it up 100% to make it $25 per prep and then phase it over the few, next few years to get up to the full cost recovery, kind of like Mr. Cavan just said regarding some of the fees. Same goes with the onsite event staff. Right now it's $20 per hour, full cost recovery 60, same type of proposal. We're, we're trying to ratchet that up. And what that does is it allows us to work with those event organizers that do use our parks and kind of helps them plan over the next couple of years for a potential increase with that. So that's kind of the philosophy we went with some of those park fees on that. And then you'll see, like, I, I did call out the baseball and softball field rentals as well as the, just the field rentals. The difference is diamonds, rectangles, if that makes sense, soccer fields, baseball field, softball fields. Full cost recovery in those are a little different. It's a little bit more expensive to do a softball field than a, than an actual rectangle field just because of the dirt and the sprinklers and all the above with that. But we are proposing to raise those a little bit to $15, mainly because the majority of the people that use those are the volunteer coaches, the MYBs, the INI in sports and those types of things to make sure they have field reserves. So like I said before, really, I'm just looking for feedback. Head nods, thumbs up for us to come back in a couple of weeks. So at this point, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Garrett. Counsel questions?
Mayor.
Counselman Cavan.
Garrett, appreciate the memo, especially the notes, very helpful for me. I remember that 2018 council meeting where we were talking about this. And if I recall at the time, the department was proposing charging fees kind of based on desirability of shelters. So a more desirable shelter, we would charge more, or less desirable, we would charge less. I didn't particularly care for that idea at the time. And it looks like what I'm seeing here tonight is a more uniform approach, which is a shell, big shelter costs this, a smaller shelter costs that. That being said, help me understand, on a Saturday in the summer, what's the, what's the occupancy or vacancy of our shelters? I mean, are all of our shelters getting booked up every, every Saturday in the summer? Is it 50%? I mean, just maybe give counsel a little flavor about what the usage is? Maybe not just even during the summer, but throughout the year?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Counselman Cavan, great question. Thanks for asking that. I, I don't know the exact number per detail, whatever, but I can say that all of our big parks like Settlers, Discovery, Kleiner, the majority of our shelters are booked. It is so hard to find a spot. We open our registration for shelters, the shelter season, I would say. Shelter season doesn't start until April, middle of April, right around Easter, through middle of October. But we open that season the first Monday in February at 9:00 AM. And our phones are lit up and online is happening. So if you don't book something in that first couple of days or the first day, it's super hard to get something on a Friday, Saturday or Sunday at Settlers, Kleiner, Discovery, Story Park, those types of parks. So I, I hope that answers that question, so.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Counselman Cavan.
Your recommendation for a, for a ramp up period for the field prep? I think that makes sense. I'm, I'm in agreement on that. And so I recognize, right, and I like tonight, probably not a high utilization of our shelters and, you know, likely people aren't going to reserve. They still may use them, but they're not necessarily reserving them. Talk to me a little bit about, Cavan or family goes and does a picnic tonight before city council meeting and we clean up, you know, we take care of business, but we leave. It still will require some response from the department to observe maintenance. I know we can't capture that cost, but is, is there, have, has the department looked at what that unanticipated loss of, the unanticipated cost associated with unreserved shelters and how much that costs the city?
Mr. Mayor, Counselman Cavan, I'm sure we could come up with a number for you on that. But the reality of it is, I mean, parks are used all the time. And regardless, we still mow the grass, we still, you know, blow off the shelters, clean the shelters, fix the, the tables, move some of the tables, paint shelters, make those repairs. We all still got to change the trash. So it'd be very tough for us to narrow it down to just shelters itself, if that makes any sense.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just was more curious about.
Yeah.
What those, and again, there are residents, they pay for the parks, we want them to use them. And the point is to provide this as, as an amenity and to recover the cost of offering that amenity.
Exactly.
Appreciate the explanation, thanks.
And you can ask our park staff, our parks have been heavily used. I mean, it just continues to grow. But yeah, yeah, good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Taylor.
Yeah, Garrett, I appreciate the, kind of the detail here. Some of the notes on those fees at the end are kind of warm, maybe some little discussion. But I think for me, this is a little bit of a philosophical view when I look at the fees because we provide these parks for everybody. All taxpayers are contributing monies to provide this park, right? We don't say, you know, pay to use it as, from a sort of philosophical point of view with parks. And we want to have people out there and they are busy. I mean, I go to parks quite a bit, it's one of the, it's great. I had a friend that moved here from Pennsylvania about six years ago. And he just couldn't believe the parks and he hadn't, he hadn't even been down south of the freeway to check out the parks down there yet. So I said, you gotta go check them out. And he, he just thought this was, you know, Meridian was amazing and it's a great, you know, it is great foresight by our previous council members, the park staff that have done a great job. Here's my problem, I don't think I'm going to support any cost recovery on any of the fees because I think it's okay to say on something like this, we're subsidizing it already. I don't want to create a, a burden on people who want to rent a, a, a shelter or something. I, because what, if what we're trying to say is we're, we're trying to recover the cost, we're paying for it anyway. So we're going to either pay for it from just the monies that we give to park for salaried staff and all that versus the monies we collect through the fees. I just, I just don't like that as a philosophical argument for myself. Don't mind if anyone has a different point of view, that's just kind of where, what I'm thinking is, I just see that and I just think families, kids, small groups. And, you know, again, not massive increases on some of these, these shelter fees, but Eighth Street Park, I actually go to that park a lot. I used to go coach Meridian Pal football there for about seven years because they had a big, big tree. And in September, when it was hot, that tree gave a shelter and it was quiet and there was a bathroom, there was a park. And it was great, $40 to $52 to get that shelter. Not massive, but you know what? It, it adds up, it adds up. So I think we should consider, as counsel, philosophically, when it comes to our parks and the use of the park, do we really want to pursue a full cost recovery philosophy? Or do we want to say, hey, we're already subsidizing this anyway, we're providing the service. So how do we want to pay for it? Do we really want to impose a cost on groups that we, we do want them to come to the parks? Or do we just want to say, hey, this is a service we provide to the city because this is just a really good city and this is what we're going to do? So that said, I, I think there's a couple of these nuanced fees at the end that I might be open to some discussion about making some, some changes there. That makes some sense, but the other ones kind of listed on the table, I don't think I would support any, any changes on that. But you did a good job. That's just my philosophy.
Thank, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Whitlock.
I appreciate Councilman Taylor's position on that, but I just, you know, I think of whether it's a state park, a county park or a city park. Like Garrett said, I think the demand is pretty high. I mean, I remember trying to rent a campsite at Ponderosa State Park. And if you didn't do it January 1st by 12:02 in the morning, you were out of luck. It didn't matter if it was 10 bucks a site or 50 bucks a site, they were going, they were in high demand. Now philosophically, should, should it be 10 bucks? Should it be free? I'd be happy to engage in that conversation, but I think where there is a, a demand and we're seeing it and we do have costs to maintain, we ought to recover something from that. And I, these haven't been touched since 2018. I think we ought to look at, you know, what is reasonable in 2025 or soon to be 2026. I don't think we've overstepped the bounds with the increases here. So again, I, I appreciate the philosophical position, but I, I also recognize that they are in high demand, there is a cost associated with it. And we probably ought to get close, even though it's not full cost recovery, we ought to make some adjustments probably every seven or eight years.
Mr. Mayor, to, to kind of respond to that, and I should, maybe I should clarify, on the shelters itself, that number is a 30% increase. We still don't do a full cost recovery on the shelters, if that makes sense. Some of the other ones like the ball field prep and things, that, that's a direct benefit to that, maybe an individual or group. So we wanted to do cost, full cost recovery. That, that's kind of where I was on that. And so just to clarify, but yeah, thank you.
Counselman Schrader.
You know, I, I wish we had a way to differentiate. And I wanted to check, Garrett, so you don't have to be a Meridian resident to, do you have to be a Meridian resident to reserve a shelter? I think the answer is no.
No is correct.
Yeah, so I think that, that's kind of where I think, and Counselman Taylor makes a good point, but I think we have to think that through. So, you know, I'd love it that if you're, if you're a family in Meridian and you're a Meridian resident and you want to like have a family gathering at a shelter, I really don't want to charge for that if, if we don't need to. The same thing is true for like nonprofits and things like that based out of Meridian. But if you're, if you're an interloper from Star, you know, and you're coming, pretty soon you're coming to Meridian because we don't charge any fees on our shelters, like I don't think we want that. So I, I kind of maybe like the golf course, you know, how like at the golf course, we have like lower fees for Meridian residents? Maybe we need a similar approach to this. I, I'm not sure we've landed on the right, on the right approach. I mean, we've always charged something. I'm just nervous about charging nothing and then being overrun by people from outside of our city. Um, I'm just nervous about charging nothing and then being overrun by people from outside of our city. That, that concerns me.
Mr. Mayor, um, Councilwoman Strater, thank you for the, the comments. Um, really, some of the fees are really just a fee to let a group have some skin in the game to show up if they make a reservation, if that makes sense. Um, we didn't want to make these super high, but we want to make them good. Like I might, I've used our shelters before for my kid's birthday in May, right? Um, because indoor spaces are tough to combine or more expensive, but a park and a shelter is super great. So we tried to make those to where there, people have some skin in the game. We, we found that if we make things free, people may not show up and then it's reserved and looks reserved. Uh, when it comes to the resident, non-resident thing, that's something that um, we can look into and we'd have to look into, um, if our software can do that when it comes to online registrations, if that makes sense, or reservations. But that's a, that's a good, good point. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Just a quick point and you know, getting some good feedback from my, my neighbor here. Wasn't suggesting we get rid of the fees. I was fine with what we have because I agree, having some skin in the game, but reminds me like when I expressed something to my wife and I know I'm really clear, she comes back and says, that's not how I heard it. So to be clear, I'm okay with the fees we have and I could accept some in, increase. I've just, I, I want to be very sensitive to that. I wouldn't support a 30% increase, even though I understand the rationale, but
Sure.
Maybe some small tweaks, but I think it's important for me that we keep these, keep these low. So I wasn't suggesting no fees. I do get that. You know, we want to have some skin in the game, people pay, and I'm perfectly fine with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
And, uh, most closely aligned with where Councilman Whitlock was coming from, you know, I, I, I'm constantly reminded whether it's one of our shelters, one of our parks, golf course, our swimming pool, that we keep those in incredible condition. And we pride ourselves on keeping all of our facilities in incredible condition. And I think we don't want to ever come to a position where we start losing that edge that we have over a lot of different facilities across this valley. These fees haven't been changed since 2018.
Correct.
And some of these are 30% change. That means we're talking about a 4% change year over year. I don't think that's outrageous. I think that's pretty fair. I think we need to do whatever we can to continue to support our facilities to keep them top notch. Cause I think that's why they're so busy. The one thing I'd like to see added when we look at these is if you could give us a usage year by year. So we knew is as we're raising fees, are we seeing a reduction, the amount of these that are being rented or are we seeing an increase or no change? We're still having a high degree of usage.
Mr. Mayor, I think Jenny may be able to come up with those numbers.
Jenny's helping me with data over here, but I have that data in front of me now. Um, in terms of total reservations, now it varies by shelter and location. So, um, you know, the, the part, the shelters in Kleiner Park are reserved way more than the shelter in Eighth Street Park. So, but, uh, total reservations, um, uh, 2015 was 1,229. Okay. In 2024, I have them year by year, if you want interim years, but it, um, it goes up to 1537. And I don't know why 2023 was so much higher, but, uh, that 2023 looks like our peak at 2,225 shelter reservations. So somewhere in the neighborhood of, um, well, currently our most recent year is 1,500 res, total reservations, but they're not, um, uh, they fluctuate year by year, but there's not a big fluctuation and they're not decreasing, uh, or, you know, increasing every year. They're in the, the 1,500 to 1,200 to 2,200 range every year for the last eight years.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Steve. I, I appreciate that. And I realize it's been seven years since we've looked at raising them. So looking at these numbers fluctuating, they're not fluctuating based on the cost, they're fluctuating on factors that we may not be able to grab today.
Yeah. Weather, smoke, all the above kind of factor in that.
So I'm, I'm definitely in support of what you're trying to do. I think there, these are reasonable fee increases. I think especially since we're looking at seven years since we've done this. I, I don't want to see anything jeopardize the quality of the park facilities and the parks that we have and how we take care of. And us coming down to a point where we're paying a higher and higher percentage of the cost to maintain these shelters and maintain these parks. Cause the last time I was over parks and started talking about the costs of the equipment, just to mow the grass. I was a little blown away at how expensive this equipment is, not to mention how expensive it is to staff Parks Department, maintain all these facilities. I'm, I'm in support of this. I understand everyone else's situation on this, but I think this is a very reasonable 4% a year increase over the past seven years.
Mr. Mayor, so what I've, I've kind of heard kind of a mixed bag here, whether I should post these or not, or if they need more discussion, I'm happy to come back and do more discussion. Um, we're not in a major rush to do this. I know that Skylar would like to start getting stuff ready for next year already as soon as possible, but there is no reason why we can't come back. Um, I'm having shoulder surgery on my other shoulder this year, so I won't be back until December 2nd. So I think that's the next available meeting really is anyways after, if we did post these, but, um, I don't know if I should post these at this point, come back for discussion or what, what's the flavor?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
We've got fairly good consensus to post and move forward for a, a decision, public hearing and uh, we may hear other feedback from our patrons about what does and what doesn't make sense. Been, I think that's an important piece to take in before we make our decision. So I'm, I'm supportive of moving forward. I don't see anybody is saying let's not move forward. So I think we should be good to go.
Awesome. Councilwoman Schager.
I'm totally fine with that. I, but separately, I would really like you to research the feasibility of either differentiating the fees, resident to non-resident, or just charging some kind of non-resident reservation fee, because I don't think that's fair. That, that's just a general comment, but that could come later. Like, I don't think that that, that that needs to be an impediment to what you're doing, but I, I just, it doesn't strike me as fair how we're approaching it currently.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shidway.
Uh, if I could address that question, uh, for Councilwoman Strater, uh, I would personally, I, I, I get the draw to wanting to differentiate those. I would recommend against that simply because our cost in taking each reservation would be much higher if we have to be the ones verifying residency. Now, if we're willing to accept a, an honor system, then so be it. I mean, then it doesn't add any staff time. But we are creating a huge incentive for people to just check the box that they're Meridian resident, whether or not they are, because there's no checks or balances on that unless we are verifying driver's licenses. Um, so I just put that out there for your consideration.
Steve, where, where, where do we currently have resident versus non-resident in the Parks Department? And how do we do that?
We have resident, non-resident fees on sports and at home court. And we do have a very time intensive process for the, the sport. We do have to go through checks, um, for their, well, I guess it starts off with an honor system at sports. Garrett, you, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I'll, I'll, but, um, at any point during, um, on a sports play, a team can can call for a roster check. And then if the roster gets checked and they are incorrect, then they, it gets, then you have to help me out, what happens there.
Yeah. The people that are playing illegally are obviously removed from the game and this, the manager gets like a two or three game suspension. Um, to my understanding. So that, that's how they kind of check the resident, non-resident. It comes to player fees when it goes in sports. In the random, in the random checks that we do. At home court, we have a resident, non-resident for the day passes and the point of sale stuff, and they have to show an ID. Show them, then we give them the resident, non-resident rate or discount.
And those are in person.
You're right. But it's not onerous. It is just a checking of an ID. At the end of the day, I mean.
At, at home court, yes.
Like I said, and I thought it was a $10 resident versus non-resident difference in our sports leagues, if I thought correct.
We, we would require everyone to contact us for a shelter reservation, whereas right now the, almost all of them are online. Right.
And Mr. Mayor, and just, just to add onto that, and the, uh, Councilwoman Strater's point, when I said earlier, we'd have to check our recreation software. Some softwares, I don't know, I don't think ours does this, has like a geo fence around it and they have to, we have to, on our system, they input when they create their account, the right address, not just a random Meridian address to where the software can then automatically do that. I don't think our software does that unless we up the, the package that we get through rec one to be more expensive. I, I need to look into it to see, and that's, that was kind of my response to Councilwoman Strater is I need to research it a little bit more before I really say yes or no to that or whatever.
I think she was open to you spending the time to examine those issues.
Exactly.
I think we can think of 10 different ways to do it. Which way is technology friendly if we want to do it?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Councilman.
Just one final question. Garrett, these are hoped to go into effect January 1, or what's the effective date of these proposed changes?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Whitlock, um, yeah, right now we wouldn't open our shelter seasons or um, until the first Monday in February. So he gives us the time to promote it, put it online, advertise it. So in theory, it would take place right when we get it approved, if that makes sense, the very next day. But we, we don't book anything or charge anything for fields and those types of things until realistically February. I think it's third or fourth this year. So, thanks. I hope that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, I would also say that it does help earlier for uh, team sports that are booking field reservations to know in advance what their field reservation fees are going to be.
Correct. Yeah. Skylar's already inputting stuff for next year. So, um, yeah, the sooner we know, the better, but the reality of it is um, we wouldn't take place until next, next spring.
So we'll have this back on the second of December. If there's any other conversations, please follow up directly with the uh, team. If you have any concerns about what's being proposed at that point in time.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. Appreciate it.
And as a reminder, this will be the highest fee, but it can be reduced if that's the will of council on any of these items at that time. All right. Next item, item 20, Meridian Youth Baseball Softball Partnership Agreement. Mr. White.
All right, let's, uh, stop talking about fees and start talking about Meridian Youth Baseball. Um, so really the objective tonight is for me to provide you as council, the information to where we can approve the agreement that's in front of you tonight. Um, over the past couple, I'd say a couple of years, I feel like it's, um, I've been really heavily involved with more of the MYB operations and, and being invited to board meetings and those types of things over the past three or four years. Um, and I just last January, January of 25, January 14th of 2025, MYB came and gave you guys a presentation. Um, like I'd said, that night, they had came and gave a presentation to our commission that was just awesome. And I, I didn't realize the full breadth of what they do until they started explaining these things and kind of tell us the internal operations of it. And that's when we decided, hey, we need to come and have them talk to you guys. So and that night they talked about all the kids that they have, 2,200 plus kids involved in their program. Um, they never turn kids away. They're very competitive. They have great competitive teams, but they never turn kids away. They actually help on a scholarship program based on last year's stuff, about 15 to 20 families that can't afford it. They still get those kids involved. They don't say no, which is an awesome thing. Um, you hear about how good they are, but you never, they have a great rec program too in that. Um, they have several programs like the umpire and training program, which I had no idea about, right? And they had their kids. And that's another way for them to actually pay for some of their fees as those kids go and work, work for them and help them. So it's just an overall great, great program. And, um, with the new community center and park expansion coming up, we felt that this was a good time to, um, partner again with them to increase their, their field, um, usage. So, um, the original agreement was done back in 2006, just a little over 20 years ago. Um, to, to, um, to build that. And the original agreement ends March 1st of 2029, which in theory, that's the start of their 2929 season. So that basically goes to the 2028 season. Um, so, um, we know that there's a parking need over there. So we decided to start working with MYB and we talked, we've been talking about $500,000 now for a little bit. And, um, the agreement basically is structured very similar to what Powell's agreement was with, um, Heroes Park, Hero and Powell. Paying for about half of the parking lot there. So MYB and this agreement, some of the, the highlights of it or the, the talking points of it is MYB would pay $500,000 over the course of 20 years, which is approximately $25,000 per, um, year. The, it's structured in a 20 year agreement, although it's really structured every five year it renews. Um, we took some feedback from, um, specific council members on that and wanted to make sure it was in there and it's a great idea. We loved it. So we decided to throw that in there. Um, they start paying, um, the 25,000, um, starting in the spring of 2028 and it comes in two different chunks. Um, what's it, 1250, 1250. So it kind of aligns with their registration seasons, if that makes sense. So we tried to do that for them. Um, it specifically calls out the schedule between Meridian Baseball Softball, the city and the public in the previous agreement that was never really established. And we really never knew when MYB could use it or they were using it all the time because they have so many kids and when the city could use it, when the public can use it. So we wanted to address that. So we're, when people call myself or Skylar or department, like, well, when can we use it? Um, so we tried to, um, establish those dates and times in there with that, as long as, as well as the batting cages. Um, it requires quarterly meetings and, um, I have to give Travis and Nick, I should have introduced those guys before. Those are, Travis is the, the MYB president. And Nick is the new, um, vice president, but Nick, you were the treasurer before, if I may, if I remember right. So I'm very familiar with those guys, but those guys, um, have invited me to meetings over the last four or five years. I've been there on Sunday nights. They meet every, the first Sunday, um, of every month, we meet and, um, talk. They've, they've shared their stuff. I've shared our stuff. Um, it's really been a great partnership, um, over the last couple of years that I've experienced. And I, I really appreciate those guys, including us in anything they do. Um, but it requires quarterly meetings. Um, the previous didn't. It was just kind of, when, when are we going to talk? So, um, this has been great. We established that. Um, other things it establishes is, um, when we meet, we talk about projects, scheduling, future needs, uh, major projects that come up to where, you know, if we have to close a field down, we try to schedule that with them. It's just a communication tool in that. It establishes who's responsible for specific maintenance duties. Um, you, if you remember when they came and talked in January, they do a lot on those fields for us and really help our park staff out quite a bit. Um, when it comes to just painting projects, repair projects, field prep projects, all the above, they've been extremely helpful with that and put a lot of time and effort into that stuff. Um, doesn't allow for sublease in the fields. Um, because of MYB and, and you may be S softball, add softball in there. Um, because of the popularity and how good a job they do, they're very well known for the tournaments that they host here. And, and a lot of it is the facility that they put a lot of time, blood, sweat and tears into too. Um, they've grown over the couple of years. So it's been a huge, um, it's a great thing, but it also puts a lot of stress on our park staff too, to be running around cleaning restrooms, trash cans, all the above during those days. So we tried to establish some things in there and MYB, um, had some of these suggestions too, on what it would take to help our staff with that. So it's been a good thing there. And as well as, um, obviously parking, it's part of the parking lot that we're talking about, 500,000 over 20 years will help go to that. Um, but it also establishes what we feel that they should do and what they feel they should do to help with the parking. Um, right now there's lots of parking in Settlers Park. The design of the Settlers Park isn't very convenient for the ball fields, if that makes sense, but there's plenty of parking. It's people just park because it's convenient, right? And they don't want to have to walk very far. Um, this new parking lot will help with the convenience of it. We've, um, wanted to build there and we've always already told the neighbors, um, that parking is going to get worse before it gets better. Because that overflow parking lot that, that is over next to the MYB complex or the softball, baseball complex right now is going to be under construction. So we'll do some things to schedule our parks differently then, but, um, overall this agreement, we've been working on this agreement for about 18 months to two years now. And we're kind of here to get your guys' blessing and feedback and for that, I'll stand for questions. If you do have questions from my B, Travis and Nick, you're here to answer questions if needed.
Thank you, Garrett. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Whitlock.
More a comment. Garrett, thanks for bringing this forward and having the conversation here. I'll make a comment or a statement to start things off. I mean, my children are who they are today because of youth sports programs. So I don't think we can. So I don't think we can dismiss the the value that they bring to families, to these kids themselves and to our community. So thank you for spending the time and working with Meridian Youth Baseball. Our community is going to be better for it, and our kids will be better adults. I can directly tie some of of their success to, again, participation in youth sports programs. So this is critically important to me. Thank you for the clarity and the memo where you walk through really the who, what, where, how, when and why of how we're going to operate these these fields for the next 20 years. I appreciate that clarity being called out here. And on top of that, being able to to get $25,000 a year to help offset the costs, the cost of building a parking lot that is needed both at the park and ultimately will help with our community center that will be there as well. So again, more a comment than a question, so I appreciate all of that. And I appreciate the the comparison with what we did with Powell. I think it is important that that these programs participate in enhancing their ability to operate as well as enhancing the value of our parks. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
I'll just take this opportunity to acknowledge Meridian Youth Baseball as well, with them being here. My daughter started softball this year. I had a son that played baseball. So to Councilman Whitlock's point, my kids are, you know, we've done Powell, Meridian Youth Baseball is an excellent organization. And the other day I was, it was a Sunday morning, I think it was like 8:30, and there were some games going on out there. I think this was a couple of weeks ago. And then later that week, in the middle of the day, I went home and I was leaving, and there was a bunch of older gentlemen out there playing softball too. And they had a fantastic surface to to play on. And I thought, this is a great partnership where both sides are really benefiting from the facilities. They're fantastic facilities. When I was 12 and I went and I slid into home base at Fairview Elementary, I got up injured because it was just terrible. It was just a terrible field, but these are fantastic fields. So I just want to, I really liked the memo. I like the creativity. I think it's a really interesting way to go about creating this really mutually beneficial partnership. So I like what I saw, and again, just want to take a chance publicly to thank you for all you guys do for our community as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kaver.
Garrett, first, I want to start by talking about you. This theme for this year, I've been talking a lot about leveling up. And I think you're somebody who's always leveling up. And, you know, it's really easy. It's often invoked for the public to criticize government employees that they just kind of sit behind a desk and don't do a whole lot. And anybody who feels that way, I want to introduce them to Garrett White because you go outside of regular business hours to connect with our partners, to connect with our community. And those organizations are better for it, and the city is better for it. And so I want to start there and just thank you for your efforts, leveling up, leveling up the cities you go engage.
Thank you.
I don't think there is another organization, another rec organization that the city's had a longer relationship with than MYB. And counsel, full disclosure, I'm a, I was, not anymore, an MYB kid. And I have great appreciation for what MYBS does for for our our community. And you really have to look at this relationship as as longstanding. And I've I've struggled a little bit with this agreement because we want to make sure that it is a win for our our residents, and it's a win for the patrons. And if if MYBS would just quit being so dang successful, we wouldn't have to have these types of conversations. But they're continuing to make a big impact in our community and to Councilmember Whitlock's point, making a big impact on on kids' lives. So I'm in support of this agreement as it's kind of been presented. I appreciate the memo. I know we'll bring it forth, I think, at a later point in time for for ratification. But just thank you for the effort, MYBS. Thanks for welcoming us into your house on a Sunday night so we can work through this together. This agreement's way better than the agreement we put together 25 years ago, and that agreement was way better than what we were working with before. And I like Garrett and MYBS that you guys are going to continue to meet collaboratively. So we don't have to wait 25 years to fix these problems as they emerge. We can solve them when they're small and be responsive to our community and to this great organization's needs. So just thanks for bringing this, and thanks for proactive work. Often so much, we're we're responding to this at the 11th hour. It's like, oh, the the year's coming to a close, the year's getting ready to begin. We got to put something together and commend you for getting out way ahead of this and giving us a long runway so that this can be a long-term successful agreement. So appreciate your good work and appreciate MYBS being here tonight.
Thanks. Appreciate the comments.
Well, I'll just add my kudos to to everyone engaged in this process. I know I know it's been a lot of work, but it's also going to be a long-term benefit for everybody working together. So kudos to everybody. We look forward to seeing this back in front of counsel. Sorry, you're.
Can we approve it tonight, or?
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Whitlock.
I would move that we approve Agenda Item Number 20, the Meridian Youth Baseball Softball Partnership Agreement as presented.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the Meridian Youth Soft, Youth Baseball Softball Partnership Agreement. Is there discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The guys have it? The agreement is agreed to?
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, we've reached the end of our meeting. Councilman Kaver?
Move that we adjourn the work session.
Motion to adjourn the work session, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The guys have it? We are adjourned.
Counsel, we'll call this meeting order for the record as November 5th, 2025, at 6:14 PM. We'll begin tonight's Riker City Council meeting with roll call tenants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Kaver. Councilwoman Little Roberts. Councilman Taylor. Councilman Overton. Councilman Whitlock. Councilwoman Strader. Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If at all, please rise and join us in the pledge. Next up is our community invocation, which tonight will be delivered by Carrie, Carrie Lafranbras. It says Boise on the end, so that's, but.
It should say Meridian.
Okay. Who's joining us from Boise Harvest. If you wouldn't mind, join us in the community invocation and take this moment of silence for reflection. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Lord, for these men and women and their commitment to this city and to the people here where we live. You said in your word in James 1:5 that we could ask for your wisdom, and so tonight, we ask. Give these leaders wisdom, understanding and clarity to work through every decision, every issue, every challenge, dilemma, complication. You have faithfully moved in gatherings just like this one throughout history, and we're asking you to do it again tonight. Bless these proceedings with your presence and bless and guide these leaders that the decisions made tonight would provide the governmental structure needed for the people here in Meridian to live productively and prosperously under the protection of your sovereign hand. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much, and thank you. Sorry for the delay in getting going tonight. Thank you. Next up is adoption of the agenda. Councilman Kaver.
Adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The guys have it? And the agenda is agreed to. Mr. Clark, anyone sign up under public form?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move on to our public hearings. Our first item up is public hearing for proposed Lakeview Golf Course fees and 2026 winter-spring fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department. And Mr. White, it is a pleasure to see you once again.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the council. I feel like I haven't talked to you in a while. So in front of you are the Lakeview Golf Course fees that we discussed a few weeks ago. Across that, we targeted a 4% increase and rounded it to the nearest dollar, whole dollar after all the tax and things. The activity guide fees are also attached to this. The activity guides are the 70/30 split with our contract instructors, like we've done every year. So really, with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who signed up in advance, Ms. Clark?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up.
Is there anybody present who would like to write testimony on this item? Seeing none, wait, let me check, make sure no one's raising their hand online. See no one raising their hand online at this point in time? Counsel, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Councilman Whitlock.
Close the public hearing on Agenda Item, Agenda Item Number One.
Have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The guys have it, and the public hearing is closed. Next item up is Item Two. Resolution number 25-2545. Ms. Clark, read this resolution by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a resolution adopting the 2025 Lakeview Golf Course golf fees and the 2026 winter-spring activity guide fees for the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department, authorizing the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department to collect such fees and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Whitlock.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 25-2545, adopting the Lakeview Golf Course fees for 2025 and the 2026 winter-spring activity guide fees for Parks and Recreation.
Have a motion of second to approve Resolution Number 25-2545. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay?
Oppose nay? The guys have it and the item is agreed to. Next item is item three, which is a public hearing for the proposed new and increasing fees for the city of Meridian. Open this public hearing with staff comments from Jenny.
Hello again. These are the fees that are below the one hundred and thirty percent threshold that has been published in the paper for our public to make comments on, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff on these items? Okay. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Mr. Clark, can we sign up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, no.
Hey, is there anybody present who would like to come forward at this time and provide testimony on this item or online? Raise your hand. See no one raising their hand or no one coming forward? Councilman Cavanagh.
Close the public hearing on proposed new increasing fees for the city of Meridian.
Second.
Have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The guys have it. The public hearing is closed. Next time up is item four, which is resolution number twenty five dash twenty five forty six. Ms. Clark, read this resolution by title.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's a resolution adopting changing fees as of December first, twenty twenty five, superseding previously adopted fees, authorizing finance department to update citywide fee schedule and authorizing city departments to collect such fees and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cavanagh.
Move we approve resolution number twenty five dash twenty five forty six, adopting the changing fees as December first, twenty twenty five.
Have a motion of second to approve resolution number twenty five dash twenty five forty six. Is there discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose nay? The guys have it and the resolution is agreed to. Counsel, if you have other future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
One quick item, as we're all aware, the voters of Meridian approved a public safety levy last night. I would like to get on our agenda either in December or maybe early January before we move into base budget meetings, maybe a, a future meeting topic about how those dollars will be displayed in our budget, how they will be shown in terms of allocation. Just, we've never been down this path before, and I think before we start getting into budget season to have a good understanding about how the citizens of Meridian will be able to see how those dollars are collected and applied.
Right? Anything else?
Nope.
And with that, do I have a motion, Councilman Cavanagh?
We adjourn.
Second.
Motion of second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The guys have it. We are adjourned.